Good morning, everyone, and thank you for coming along to our meeting today of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. Today is the 30th of the month and the meeting is open to the public. There are no items that contain exempt information. As we would normally say at the start of every meeting, this meeting has been webcast and the recording is going to be available for people to view later on the council's website. And of course, it's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. There have been no public petitions, nine public questions and no statements for today's meetings. Please, can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment switch to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today and the fire alarm test happened a little bit before this meeting, but if there is an emergency evacuation, then please take instruction from our town hall staff. And the assembly point is Tudor Square. And I am going to ask committee members to in turn introduce themselves and then for officers that are in a seated position as well with a microphone, I'll also ask them to introduce themselves as well. And I'll start, if you don't mind, with Craig, who is to my left.
Hi, my name's Craig Gumbel-Pew. I'm councillor for East Ecksford Ward.
Morning, I'm Janet Riddler, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Good morning, I'm John Wright, councillor for Walkley.
Good morning, I'm Ruth Mercerow, councillor for City Ward.
Good morning, I'm councillor Ian Horner, councillor for Baiton.
I'm councillor for Ford Ward and group spokesperson on TRC.
Good morning, I'm councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Bishop Greenhill Ward.
Thank you, Richard. And for those council officers who are in a seated position with a microphone in front of them, Shaun.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. I'm Shaun McLean, director of Regeneration and Development.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Robert Parkin, Assistant Director for Legal Services.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Rachel Appleyard, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
And of course, we do have a number of other officers who will be here to present papers and they will introduce themselves at the start of the item that they are presenting today. So that takes us on to item one of our agenda, which is an opportunity to offer apologies for absence. We have had apologies for absence from councillor Alexi Diamond and councillor Gilligan Kubo is attending as a substitute member. She's notified us that she's just run in a few minutes late and will be joining us shortly as well. Are there any other apologies for absence? I don't think so. I've also had a request from committee members to make sure that we do have a very short comfort break as part of our meeting today to ensure that our meeting is much more accessible for everyone. And I'm inclined to say that that would be a very good idea and I think colleagues would agree. Councillor Gumbel-Pew has also made me aware and doesn't mind me sharing that he's currently recovering from a back injury, so people need to be mindful that he might have to take regular breaks and stretch and walk around the room accordingly. And I'm sure that the meeting would be fine with that. That therefore takes us to item two, which is entitled Exclusion of the Public and Press. And as we said in the preamble to the meeting, the meeting today is of course open to the public and there are no items on the agenda that do contain exempt information, so there is no need to exclude the public or the press. Item three of our agenda is declarations of interest. Can I ask any member that wishes to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda to raise their hand? And if so, then can I ask them to explain whether it is a pecuniary or a personal interest and if that applies to outline the reason for the declaration? Councillor Richard Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. On item nine, the South West Bus Corridor Report, one of the proposals is within my ward, so just flagging that as one of the local members.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. We'll look forward to your contribution as part of that item as well, so thank you for making us aware. Are there any other colleagues who would like to make a declaration of interest? I don't see anyone indicating, so that takes us to item four of the agenda, which is an opportunity to look at and approve the minutes of our previous meeting. Our previous meeting happened just over a month ago, on the 11th of September this year, and I'm asking committee whether we can approve those minutes as a true and accurate record of the meeting that we had on the 11th of September. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. Just to flag up on page 13 of the minutes, it should say Network Rail, not National Rail.
Thank you for the clarification. We will make sure that that is amended in the public record, so thank you for being so diligent in spotting that, councillor Shaw. So can I ask the committee whether they're inclined to approve the minutes of our previous meeting that were held on the 11th of September? I'm seeing nodding from committee members, so therefore that item has been passed and we've approved our minutes as a true accurate record of the last meeting. Item five in our agenda is public questions and petitions. Now, just to give members and those who are members of the public who are participating in our meeting today a bit of an overview, we're now operating under the new scheme of public questions and statements, so things are slightly different. There have been no petitions or statements received for today's meeting, although we have received nine remit questions that have been received. The questioners have received written responses which have been circulated to members, and I understand that that was done on Monday, so that should be in your inbox. And those have been published on the council website. There are about 30 pages of them, which is good. It does show that our citizens in the city are actively getting involved in our democratic process, which is wonderful, so members can see those in your inbox as well. We've had two supplementary questions that were received from Mr Conshaw and Ms Reese. Neither of those questioners is able to attend the meeting today, therefore a written response will be sent to them and published on the council's website and we'll make sure that members are aware of that written response, which has already been drafted. So item five was an opportunity for public questions and petitions, and much of that has happened outside the meeting, already in line with our new public questions and statements scheme. Item six is an opportunity for members to ask questions. On this occasion, none have been received. Members are of course welcome to in future submit questions to me as Chair of the committee. We do have full council next week as well, and I know that lots of colleagues in your political groups have submitted questions, so that's very, very good and ensures that our democracy is alive. Item seven moves us on to the work programme. Now, for those people following at home and members, that's on page 17 of the agenda pack and Rachel Appleyard is going to run us through it.
Thank you, Chair. So the work programme contains all the known substantive items for forthcoming meetings at this committee. There's just a couple of things to draw our members' attention to. So in part two of the report, which is on page 19, included details of a petition that was submitted for council last month and referred to this committee. So there is a requirement for the committee to sort of consider that petition and consider if there is any response they may wish to take to that. The table on page 21 sets out changes to the work programme since the last meeting. There are some new items and some amendments. And then from page 23 onwards, sets out the agendas for forthcoming meetings. Also to make members aware that there have been discussions outside the public committee regarding establishing a cross-committee task and finish group on parking enforcement. Currently, this has been worked up by officers in conjunction with members and members of the Wasted Street Scene Policy Committee, because it is a cross-committee issue, to a report potentially at the next meeting to set out the scope and formally approve that task and finish group. Thank you.
And thank you, Rachel. And can I thank members of the committee as well for engaging so positively in a cross-party on the establishment of that Wasted Street Scene and TRC Joint Committee on Parking. I know that members were keen to see that that proceeded and I think the present are looking at the terms of reference of it. And also, I think there's a discussion about membership as well, but there are many issues that we jointly deal with about parking and it's really important that we get right, particularly if we are to deliver on those important vision zero ambitions that we've got as a city. Now, do I have any contributions or questions from colleagues about the work programme? I can see two colleagues, so firstly councillor Horner and then councillor Sanger. Councillor Horner.
Thank you, Chair. I just, you know, I've got a bit of a throat today, but I just wanted to support your comments about parking, because as you know, because we both sit on the Police and Crime Panel, certainly in the South East and I know in the Crooks area as well, we were informed by the police that they'd stopped their Operation Park Safe, which had been a great success. And we all spend a lot of time with people complaining about bad parking, the difficulties that it causes everybody, the danger to pedestrians, the lack of accessibility. So I really do welcome the fact that we're working on a parking strategy. We have to tackle this. People just park all over the place and it is a really serious problem. It's a serious problem for accessibility, it's a serious problem for traffic accidents. And I welcome the fact that we're going to proceed with that.
Thank you, councillor Horner. And councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. Just the very final item on page 30, the local plan update. I was hoping we would be able to make a decision today about when we were going to receive that update, whether it was going to be December or January or February. I mean, it is incredibly important issue for the city. Clearly, the hearings have thrown up a number of issues that we as members need to hear and understand, and I was optimistic that we would be able to allocate that to a meeting today.
Thank you, councillor Sanger. And we do have a cross-party local plan members working group where many of these issues are discussed. I'm mindful that we would normally turn to Will Stewart as this particular area falls under his leadership, but unfortunately, he's on annual leave today. Of course, I could ask Shaun to reflect on it, but I imagine that Shaun would probably defer to Will. And I think what we'll do, councillor Sanger, if that is okay with you, we will seek to get an update from Will about how we can bring that forward. I think next week, there's a meeting of the cross-party working group on the local plan as well. So after this meeting, what I will resolve to do is write to Will and I'll also resolve to write to Mike to ask when it would be a good opportunity to bring that update to this committee, because it is right that this committee receives an update. You're entirely right, and we do need to work towards making sure that we put that on the agenda with a firm date as much as possible. And councillor Horner, thank you very much for your apologies, councillor Sanger.
Yeah, thank you for that response. Clearly, if Will was here, he would have been able to say something. I just want to make my perennial point, and it was really noticeable from a discussion we had when we were reflecting on all nine sets of agendas for this cycle, that TRC and Strategy Resources have lots of items and some of our colleagues and other policy committees have fewer items. So there is still an imbalance and the government still needs, the committee needs to do some work to resolve that imbalance. But just looking at our schedule from now until March, I remain concerned that we have a couple of meetings coming up where there are more items for decision than we will likely be able to act, to enact in our two and a half hour meeting. So that's my first concern. My wider concern is the number of items on page 29 and 30, which we have yet to allocate. I've clearly made the point that to me, the local plan update is the really important one, but there's clearly many of those other items officers believe we should be dealing with this side of, you know, this side of May. I'm just struggling to understand how we're going to do that without putting in an extra meeting. I mean, it may be there are some items which can slip past May, but I don't think there are many. I think from a member point of view, we want to get to the stage where members are leading this process and that items that are coming from members of this committee, from all groups, are able to find space in this committee. And at the moment, our work plan over the last three years has been so busy that we've not had much space for member-led items. So I do, you know, I do urge officers to, you know, to see what can be done and to make sure that these items that we need to make decisions on by May, we find ways of doing that, if at all possible, because I don't want to. Looking at the list of your Manor Lane Crossing, Glossop Road Crossing, they all sound to me very important things. Parking, you've already spoken about the parking plan, the tram vision, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to invest in the tram and to extend the tram network. So a whole lot of things on this, you know, on this work plan where we haven't, where we've got these items down but no dates that are really important. So I would just urge officers and members that what more can be done to make sure that we deal with as many of these in this meaningful year as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Sanger. You're entirely right to make those points and I think we need to be mindful of them going forward. Councillor Horner, also thank you very much for making reference to the work of the Police and Crime Panel as well and to make the committee aware. I think councillor Notte, Milson, myself and councillor Horner agreed with South Yorkshire's mayor, Oliver Copard, that we would partake in a joint meeting as part of the Police and Crime Panel to investigate Operation Park Safe and how we can fill that gap going forward in the future. And it was heard very loud and clear, wasn't it, across that political divide, that all of us wanted to see a solution being brought forward for that particular issue? Councillor Gumbel-Pew.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, as other members have raised their perennial points, I'll raise mine, which is the one about how the weighting of our agenda seems to be much more skewed to detail, to highway, local highway schemes and away from the overview of how we're going to meet our policy to achieve net zero 2030. You know, unless we make some choices to bring some of those items up the agenda, you know, we are failing in our mission on that front. And we've said again that a lot of these local schemes need to be, the detail of them needs to be put out to the local area committees and the local board members who've got the local expertise and insight, whereas our role as a policy committee is to be furthering the underlying policy, which is to achieve the modal shift and make sure that we're not favouring car transport over other less carbon intensive modes of transport. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gumbel-Pew. And I guess as part of that, we're looking forward to in December as part of our meeting receiving that annual climate report. And today also, we are excited to approve the roadmap relating to land use in this city as well, but I think those wider points are really pertinent and well made, so thank you for being an advocate for those very important issues in our city. Thank you, colleagues, for your contributions there. I think there's lots for us to be mindful of moving forward, particularly those points that councillor Sanger made about items that are on page 29, which are on our work programme but have not yet had a date to be agreed to go forward. And I guess there are lots of reasons why that is, but we do need to work towards making sure that that added to the work programme with a firm date. That therefore takes us to the next point in our agenda, but can I just see that colleagues are content with us approving the work programme as it is, obviously with the caveats mentioned today? I can see that the colleagues are broadly nodding that they're happy to approve the work programme. That therefore takes us to some of the formal decisions that we are making today. Just before we do so, for each of those substantive items on our agenda, please can I remind everyone of the process that we are going to be following. Officers will be invited to present their reports to the committee and members and the public have had access to those reports in advance, so we are going to assume that members have read those reports and there's going to be quite a high level summary that is given about each of those particular items. That's going to be followed by questions from members to officers. Now, once all of those questions have been asked and responses provided, we'll move into any discussion of that particular item if it is necessary. After any discussion has taken place, the recommendation may be moved and seconded and then taken to a vote. And having that sort of process will enable us to conduct business in the meeting smoothly and efficiently, and I'd like to thank you all for your cooperation. Now, moving us into those formal decision-making items, we have item eight, which is an exciting and ambitious item, which is on page 33 of your agenda pack, and I think Kate and Greg are going to be introducing it today, and it's on the development of the Sheffield Walking, Wheeling and Cycling Investment Plan. Kate, I know that committee members, Will, Kate, Greg and Tom, I know that committee members will have met with you on many occasions, but if you could all introduce yourself before presenting to us, it would be very appreciated. So the members of the public watching from home will be able to know who everyone is.
Thank you, Chair. Kate Jockle, Principal Transport Planner in the City Transport Service.
Good morning, Tom Finnegan-Smith, Assistant Director for City Transport.
Oh, sorry. Greg Chalice, Senior Transport Planner, working the Transport Planning Team to Kate.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, committee. Yes, this report is about the development of a citywide walking, wheeling and cycling investment plan. It is an exciting piece of work. Am I allowed to say it's more exciting than some of the other things that I've worked on over the years? The plan's going to bring together what has already been done in terms of investment in walking, wheeling and cycling, what's already in the pipeline, what's funded already being developed and recalling that in the short term. And then looking at what and where would be the next areas and routes to focus improvements on, so into the medium term, and then also what a citywide network might look like for the longer term. It's going to cover investment in infrastructure improvements, which South Yorkshire colleagues want to call the hardware by way of shorthand, and also complementary investment or software. The plan's being developed in conjunction with similar plans across South Yorkshire, so all the other districts, and in collaboration with the South Yorkshire Combined Authority. And the Combined Authority is looking for the plans to be complete by around Easter next year, so that it will feed into discussions around future funding streams. So I have a plan, huge benefits from making walking, wheeling and cycling easier and safer. The particular purpose of an investment plan is to assist with bringing in funding to achieve that, particularly from the Department of Transport, but it could be broader than that. It would show the long-term vision for a citywide network and then the broad phases of network development and provide a firm footing to go forward and develop proposals in conjunction with local communities which meet identified needs. So the report sets all that out and reports on progress to date, and the progress to date is particularly around community engagement and the development of a community evidence base. So back in March, committee approved an approach to community engagement which aimed to engage with groups that we don't usually hear with on active travel in a very targeted way, so recognising that there was a deficit citywide on the, given the demographic profile of respondents to many of the surveys and consultations that take place on active travel. So this is what Greg has been leading on over the summer, bringing in some consultants to assist and very much working through the local area committees and also working in conjunction with some of the voluntary community and faith sector groups which the local area committees pointed us towards and which were interested in working with us, and we made a small payment to them for the work that they did in that respect. So that work is now the subject of quite a comprehensive report, which is attached to this report as Appendix One. And that shows how the work that's been done over the summer supplements work that we have done previously in relation to surveys and consultations and so on on active travel. The engagement did achieve what it set out to do in terms of its reach. We had a broader reach than we have had previously, and it shows a general appetite, very, very positive responses to the idea of walking and cycling more. Lots of questions around what stopped people doing it, so what were the barriers? That highlighted particularly road safety concerns, traffic speeds, obstacles on paths and pavements particularly, but not only parked vehicles, which have already been referred to. Significant concerns about personal safety when walking and wheeling, especially for women and women of Asian ethnicity as well. For cycling, also road safety as a top concern, especially for women and a view that specific measures such as protected bike lanes are necessary, also factors such as not owning a bike, obviously the topography of Sheffield, lack of cycle parking and lack of joined-up routes. So probably a lot of things that you would expect, but some interesting variances with responses from different groups. So valuable feedback in relation to equalities, particularly disabled people and Asian women, the additional impediments. We've learnt something about journey patterns in local areas and key destinations that people go to and would like to go to, and all of that is reported to you today and will assist in us developing the plan, including how to involve the communities in taking this forward. So the other thing that's included in the plan is in relation to the next steps, taking the network planning forward, which will involve prioritising some neighbourhoods and corridors for the development of more focused plans. And Appendix Two sets out a broad multi-criteria assessment, which is a tool that will help us with that. It includes measures in relation to public health, access to employment and education, air quality, carbon, road safety and so on. And subject to approval today, we'll take that forward and members will be involved in further discussions as the plan develops through into the spring. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Kate, for taking us through that report and also for colleagues' hard work in putting that report together. Councillor Misra.
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much. This is a really useful and interesting report, and it's really impressive to read in it that 70% of the responses to the survey were from people who say they haven't completed council surveys before. I'm really pleased that the plan hopes to address transport-based social exclusion, especially as a third of Sheffield's residents don't have access to a vehicle. especially as a third of Sheffield's residents don't have access to a vehicle. I really feel that having good active travel networks doesn't just link up different areas and provide a pleasant environment, but it also, it's a really important element of good public health and helps people to connect well to each other and feel less isolated. I personally can certainly echo the comments from residents and consultees about their impediments to travelling actively, identified as obstacles and obstructions and particularly vehicles parked on paths and pavements, with a lot of respondents calling for stricter enforcement. I'd certainly echo this. And I would say that obstructive parking does need to be properly enforced by CEOs and South Yorkshire Police for this plan to work. I can't stress enough how important it is that we address this. Obstructive parking's endemic across the city and it stops people from getting about safely or even getting about at all. And we really need to work with Wasteland Street Scene on this. I also recognise the other key concerns like street clutter, bins, advertising boards and the condition and cleanliness of paths, insufficient lighting and concerns about crime. I'd also say that the lack of clearing makes neighbourhoods and routes appear neglected and feels less safe, and it makes for a poor quality public realm. I'm aware that only grit and clear the cycleways and footways around hospitals and within the city centre network. This means that all other parts of the city are extremely dangerous during the winter, especially so on hilly streets. People often have to walk in the road, which has been gritted because the pavements are slippy and uncleared. We need to address this with the other committees too. And leaf clearing is also really important to people on bikes because they're at risk when drainage infrastructure isn't cleared of any debris. Slippery, muddy road edges and pavements are highly risky to people on foot, wheel and bike, and it deters people from walking, wheeling and cycling. I also noticed in the report that not being able to split modes with public transport was identified as a barrier in other instances, for example, bad weather. And we need to take note of this and press the mayoral authority to look at modal split. And a lot of the consultees said that it was hindered by safety concerns, including busy roads and driver behaviour. Another way that we can look at enforcing this is trying to get the police to enforce lower speed limits and having lower speed limits in parts of the city. What I would say, that our current transport provision is massively unfair and it's a real inequalities issue. And all of our committees' travel, active travel plans are doomed to failure unless we address this, unless we address all of these issues working across the council. So I request that we write to Wasteland Street Scene to request cross-committee work on this and also work with the mayor and South Yorkshire Police, asking the police to properly fund and prioritise road safety and improve accessibility for pedestrians, including reversing the decision to abandon Operation Park Safe. I do have some further questions as well. Particularly are schools at the heart of the new zones? Because we need to work outwards from school streets so that people actually have walks, routes to and from school, not just the final destination. And one small point about seating and benches. It's really important that there is seating and benches so that people have places to rest when they're walking and also have the potential to connect with other people to reduce isolation.
Thank you. Kate, I'm mindful there's quite a few questions there. Are you able to get back to us on those now?
I think in general, I recognise that obviously a lot of this is cross-committee. Yeah, and welcome that desire to work across committees. Specifically on the schools question. I don't want to prejudge what members might decide as we take this plan forward, but I would envisage that schools would be very important within looking at the neighbourhood work that would be taken forward into the pipeline planning, if you like. And there's obviously a lot of work going on with schools already, which would be coordinated, collaborated, so yeah.
Thank you, Kate. Did you say, councillor Mizrow, that you had additional questions that you'd like to ask?
No, those are my two questions, but I have a request that we look to work with Wasteland Street Scene, not just with the parking issue, but also with things like winter clearance. Because without proper gritting and clearing of leaves, for example, these plans aren't going to work properly. People can't get about, a lot of pavements are just unfit to walk and wheel on during the winter and autumn months.
To councillor Mizrow, are you therefore proposing that this committee seeks to work collaboratively as part of this piece of work, which I think Kate was quite happy to accept as part of this? Or do you wish to make a suggestion that we modify the recommendations in this report to add that, which we'd have to deal with later on in this meeting?
I think my request would be to work cross-committee and look at actually dealing with the, for example, the frequency and the remit of the clearing strategy with Wasteland Street Scene and with leaf clearance and gritting, for example. Because without addressing that, it's not going to enable people to get around in their neighbourhoods.
Kate, are you able to perhaps give us some reflections on a way forward for that particular issue?
Thank you, Chair. I think maybe my suggestion, if committee support it, is that, as Kate's outlined, the plan that we're going to produce is mainly focused around hardware, software measures. So infrastructure and then the enabling measures. There's almost something in between here, which is that ongoing maintenance activity of the infrastructure that we introduce. So potentially as part of the plan, we could touch on some of those issues and have further discussions across with the Wasteland Street Scene Committee to inform some of those aspects of the plan as it comes forward, if that would be suitable.
Can I add to that? That I think obviously a lot of those issues have come up through the community engagement and will come up again when we are at the next stage of going back to the community. So we do need to liaise with Wasteland Street Scene and colleagues in that service and discuss all of that.
Councillor Mizrow, does that satisfy you in terms of a good way forward?
Yes, thank you.
Superb, thank you. That therefore would take us on to councillor Horner.
Thank you, Chair. Just to echo the points that councillor Mizrow made about clearing paths and all the rest of it, because that does affect us certainly in the outlying areas. It's really important that we get on with a walking and cycling strategy. I'm really pleased that the Rother Valley Parking Scheme has finally got started. The work is happening. I know it's gone through, it's been a long process. But the fact is now, we're going to solve the parking problem. It is not possible to get from the tram to Rother Valley by walking on a pavement. Because the road down there, and it's not a short walk, it'll be 10 minutes, has a path probably in one tiny bit of it. So people have to walk on the grass. So actually, you know, yes, let's have a cycle lane as well, but there isn't even a path at the minute to get there. So we're addressing one problem, but we're not addressing, in that instance, we persuade people not to drive there in the first place by possibly cycling or walking. And so I just wanted to draw that to your attention.
Thank you, councillor Horner. And I think I'll come back for reflection from officers on that in a second, if that's okay. Councillor Gilligan-Cubber, I think you perhaps also indicated, I should have gone to you before councillor Horner. Councillor Gilligan-Cubber, can you just pass your microphone?
Yeah, sorry. Just a technical point, and it's on page 67 of the consultation. It says Fox Valley Market slash Hillsborough interchange, and it's located in the north lap, but Hillsborough is in the central lap. And I just think this ought to be represented correctly on page 67.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan-Cubber. I'm sure that we can make sure that that is updated. It seems that it's just perhaps an oversight that sometimes does happen.
Yeah, it's not important. The other thing is I think there are discussions ongoing with the Wasteland Street Scene about setting up, and you've probably heard something about them. So I think they are ongoing. And I think it would be good to set it up and develop the remit jointly between the two committees.
Thank you. And I think you're making particular reference there to the joint committee that we are seeking to set up with cross-party support, particularly on parking. But no doubt there'll be many other cross-cutting issues in the future. Would it be possible just to reflect back on some of the points that councillor Horner made? I think particularly about pavements. You reflected about kind of Rother Valley and the challenges getting there.
Yeah, sure. Completely appreciate the issue. I think as this process progresses, that would be one of the things that in the areas are taken forward. That would be the kind of thing that would be looked at. So, you know, the walking and cycling and linking that up with public transport networks.
Thank you, Kate. Councillor Sanger and then councillor Shaw. Councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. And clearly, this is really important, that we have a walking, wheeling and cycling investment plan. So welcome that, welcome the fact that the mayoral authority is working collaboratively with the four authorities. So I see this as a starting point and a way of being able to work with Department for Transport, saying we have an investment plan, you know, we've got a strategy. And so I understand all that and I think I welcome that. I think my two questions, I want to come back with comments later. But my question is, if we're trying to encourage people to walk, wheel and cycle, what short sort of investment plan length should we be looking at? And it really follows on from the point that councillor Gamble-Pew made earlier, that we have, you know, we have a net zero target of 2030. The country has just failed to deliver a high-speed two-plan over 15 years. Why do we need to talk about walking, wheeling and cycling investment plan to 2045? It just feels to me, from a transport perspective, this is not like building high-speed rail. This is not like building a new motorway. It's not like building a new international airport. I would have thought that we could have an investment plan to 2035 or to 2040 at maximum. If we're to hit the climate, the net zero targets, we need to be doing this sooner rather than later. So that would be my first challenge. My second, more parochial challenge is in terms of the approach of this. And I think it's right that you, the council, the mayoral authority has reached out to everybody, including groups that don't normally respond. Because if we're going to make changes, it can't just be working with those who are already cycling or walking. And I absolutely get that. My challenge would be, what is the message for those people who want to make changes but are not in the areas that you're going to target? And I'm particularly looking in terms of, your comments in terms of 5.25, where once again the South West area has had the highest number of respondents. And many people in the South West are saying they would cycle more or they would start cycling if there was more segregated lanes. And then we're coming up with, we're agreeing a strategy, which is basically saying that between now and 2035, there's not going to be any segregated cycle investment in the South West. So it's just finding a way of not just targeting, not just targeting the hard-to-reach groups, but working with everybody and giving everybody an opportunity to have, you know, have cycle lanes. But also it's about pedestrian improvement. And I would take two obvious examples, which have come up recently. One is in terms of a paper that's coming later in this council year, the A625, where there's a stretch of Ecsor Road without a pavement, where the proposal is to build pavement. And the other, in My Own Ward, of Hanging Water Road, where we have a stretch without a pavement, which is one of the issues we're trying to resolve in terms of a crossing. So where we have these historic pavement gaps and pedestrian crossing gaps, they need to be addressed somehow. And saying to people, yes, you've been the highest respondents, but we can't go on that. We have to target our very limited resources to the worst first. Means that some people won't get anything for a very long time. And I just feel we need to find a way of working more collaboratively across the city and making sure that we do get some investment where the public are pushing for it. And as I say, it seems to me very clear from reading this that there are people in the South West who do want to see more cycle lanes and do want to see more pedestrian crossings. So I just really wanted to know what's a way forward in terms of that. Thank you, Chair.
And thank you, councillor Sanger. I'll let Kate, Tom and Greg come back on that.
Thank you, councillor. I would just say that no decisions have been made at the moment about where this, the investment, which areas the investment plan focuses on. And in terms of the areas that are focused on, it doesn't mean that nothing will happen anywhere else. Also in terms of net zero and doing things quicker, very much in favour of doing things quicker, but it does very much depend on how much money there is and how many people there are to deliver it. So it is a question of resources. Tom, do you want to add anything?
I think you've covered most of the issues, Kate. I think in terms of the delivery plan, I think what we're setting out is a clear framework. This is what the plan's trying to do. It's trying to set out kind of the where next question that we often get asked and why. In terms of why would we kind of go into a community and start talking to them about changes in their neighbourhood or along a key corridor adjacent to where people live? And that plan, that ultimate programme of different neighbourhood or corridor interventions across the city, once that's prioritised, people will be able to do two things. Understand where they sit in the overall programme within the city, but also why, based on the different kind of metrics that we've set out in the report and ultimately the priorities that the committee will determine at the next kind of time that the draft plan is put forward, which we will clearly continue to engage across the city on. That programme ultimately across the city is, will be a significant programme. Funding naturally will be a constraint into the kind of the progress that we'd be able to make in that. But there's two things there. Having a clear plan across the city means that we're able to influence, working with colleagues at South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority and working with government. And the plan and the programme will be, could be accelerated if that funding is more significant than maybe some of our assumptions initially will be. I think in terms of the kind of wider delivery, I think councillor Sanger, you've mentioned some of the other interventions that we're doing, which aren't necessarily in a kind of just a tight walking or cycling programme box. The road safety improvements on the A625 will be delivering, I think, two or three pedestrian crossing improvements as part of that project. And others from other programmes will continue to be delivered on a citywide basis. Again, many of them, such as our crossings programme, do have their own kind of way of scoring and prioritising due to the limited resources we receive. But yes, it will hopefully be able to kind of provide a much bigger message. And the message to some places and communities that aren't necessarily in that first phase, aren't that they're not important. Clearly, we'd be encouraging a number of people to do as much as is possible. And we will be looking at how we can achieve that across the city ultimately. I hope that answers the question.
Chair, I mean, I said we'll come back with comments later when people have had the chance to ask all their questions.
Thank you, councillor Sanger. And I think it was a good question to ask fundamentally that the report that's in front of us doesn't, from my understanding, answer that question about where next. But it does talk about those wider outcomes that we are hopefully all going to be on agreement about. And those wider outcomes being things like, for example, to reduce transport-related social exclusion, particularly in areas of greater risk of this. To improve health outcomes, particularly in areas where outcomes are the worst. And within that social lens, so within that, ensuring that we've got a quite strong social justice lens when we're looking at this wider question. I don't think any, I don't think any decisions are going to be made in this document about where next, but it is going to be setting the framework, the broad kind of policy outcomes that we want to achieve. And no doubt there'll be opportunities for more questions in the future about specific areas. And we should assure him of that. Councillor Shaw, apologies, Greg.
Sorry, Chair. I might just add as well, the fact that the engagement was focused on particular demographics is indicative of where the investment might go in the city. It was just that we wanted to get a more rounded view from people across the city rather than what tends to be quite a narrow demographic that we pre- rather than what tends to be quite a narrow demographic that we previously had around active travel outreach. So, that was the purpose of it. And that complements the existing evidence that we've got. We're not going to ignore things that people have told us previously. We're going to add to it as part, and continue to add to it as we do further engagement around these proposals.
And it is right, and I think the committee do broadly support the approach that we've taken with engagement, to try deliberately to reach out to those seldom-heard voices when it comes to walking, wheeling and cycling. And I think we applaud that effort. councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. So, I've got a couple of related questions that I'd like to ask first, and I have a broader question slash comment I can ask afterwards. So, thank you Kate, thank you Greg for the report. I'm pleased that there's more than 400 responses, you know, the majority of which haven't responded to one of our active travel surveys before, and is much more representative of our city than previous surveys. When this work was initially presented to the cycle forum several months ago, there was a general scepticism that this might not, you know, reveal anything that we didn't already know about. So, were there any particular findings that did surprise you? Like, what issues, for example, do we know about now that we didn't know before? And were there any findings in particular that kind of contradicted previous understandings or council policies?
Thank you councillor Shaw. And I may well just go to councillor Campbell-Pugh as well, and we can come back to those points as well, both of them. councillor Campbell-Pugh.
Thanks, Chair. On reflection, the things I want to raise are probably not questions with an answer from officers, more a point for discussion, so.
That's fine councillor Campbell-Pugh. So, I don't see any of the colleagues wishing to ask a question to officers, so we'll just go back and get an answer to or reflections for councillor Shaw's points, and then we'll open up for wider discussion if members wish to. Kate, are you able to give us some reflections or Greg on councillor Shaw's points?
Yeah, thank you for the question councillor Shaw. I think it did, the research that we did largely reinforced things that we'd already found out in previous engagement, outreach and consultation around schemes. There were some differences in terms of emphasis, because the sample was different. So, because we talked to more people who consider themselves to be disabled, because we talked to more women as a percentage than normally we would hear from, because we talked to more people of black minority ethnic origin, there were significant emphasis. Some of those emphasis were around, particularly around personal safety. So, this was strongly emphasised for women, and I think also generally for black minority ethnic people, particularly for Asian women, that they didn't feel personally safe out and about, whether that was walking or cycling, if that was what they wanted to do. So, I think there were important degrees of emphasis there that came from talking to different people. But the other point that I would make is that the value as well of the work that we've done is that because we worked closely with the local area committees and through them with the voluntary community faith sector, we've put some useful, you know, routes down into those local areas to begin a discussion, because members have said to us that they want us to provide greater evidence that the schemes that we propose meet community need. And what we have now is, I think, a better understanding, a more detailed understanding of that community need from voices that we haven't heard from before. And that will enable us to develop that discussion further as we look at what kind of proposals can meet the impediments and the barriers that people face to walking and cycling and getting about actively in their local neighbourhood and going to the places that they want to go to.
Thank you, Greg councillor Shaw. Is there anything you'd like to come back on?
Well, I mean, could I ask my next set of questions or comments?
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to be moving into the discussion element of this particular item. So, this will be the final opportunity to ask questions of officers.
All right, thank you. I mean, it's a bit of a mixed question slash comment. So, in the report, there wasn't really any mention at all about the SuperTram network in the investment plan, either in the context of the, you know, hundreds of people who have been injured while cycling at various locations across the tram network, or its, you know, potential to open up, you know, many more, you know, cycle journeys for work and leisure by allowing the carriage of cycles on trams. Since January 2015, there's been more than 800 reported collisions or incidents of people being injured on the network. And we agreed that tram safety action plan in 2017, the only action from which that was actually achieved was 20 warning signs being put up. So, in the objectives, where it's talking about to improve road safety and reduce KSI incidents, could I be reassured that part of this will also look at collisions in or around the tram network? Because you can't really achieve vision zero without addressing that, you know, that source of, you know, collisions and injuries. And I fully believe that as a committee, we should very much support the carriage of cycles on the tram network, as well as, you know, other mobility aids that aren't presently allowed. As this supports the objectives of supporting decarbonisation and opening up new journeys for work, education and leisure through, effectively, the catchment area of the tram network. So, is that something that the rest of the committee would like to see? Is it something that you could support, Chair?
Thank you councillor Shaw. So, I think the first part of your question was related to whether the report should perhaps reflect some of those issues that you talk about, the interplay with the tram network, for example. I can see that Tom perhaps wants to come back to us on that.
Yes, thank you Chair, and thank you councillor Shaw. I think you raised a very valid point there. It is something that came through in terms of the engagement we undertook, in terms of, there's a number of points specifically around issues with public transport, but in terms of that walking to, wheeling to and from, that integration issue is something that clearly in terms of the network plan, the plan that we produce, we will be covering. Specifically around some of the issues there on the kind of taking trams on, taking bikes on trams, not trams on bikes. I understand that that is an issue that colleagues at South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority are considering and looking at, obviously working closely with SuperTram now that is brought back in-house within the MCA. So, yes, we will be looking at the integration issue. That will, obviously, as kind of plans and proposals develop further and kind of see the prioritisation of areas of the city, that will be looked at in detail within each of the projects that comes forward. We've made reference to kind of issues around SuperTram previously in terms of the road safety issues and the road safety plan. Our kind of primary aim is to try and remove that conflict by looking at parallel corridors wherever possible. You know, the West Street's kind of key route through the city centre, we've progressively improved parallel routes through and to the university that then integrates and cuts across in a much more safe way than trying to design everything within corridors. It's that challenge that we've had previously, trying to fit everything into the same space, and that doesn't work inherently. So, yes, we will touch on that further as part of the future development.
Thank you, Tom. And in question, in the response to answers that for members of the public, when they ask me this particular question, I often refer to a trial that I think is currently ongoing in Gant, related to how they cut incidence of cyclists getting involved in incidents on those tram tracks. And I understand that they are continuing to test anti-slip road surface coatings, surface coatings on those, on or around those tram tracks. And we'd be interested to know a lot more about what is happening in Gant. I think it's probably also important to amplify what Thomas has said there. We've talked about the future work that this committee wants to see brought forward about the transport vision in this city. And as part of that, we will be seeking even greater segregation of our tram network from the existing highway as well, to cut down that potential for incidents involving bikes, but also to speed up trams moving around our city. But of course, we do need to work much more collaboratively with other partners to make sure that we deal with this particular issue. And it's been in the press in Sheffield more recently, but we also know that it's also been in the press in other cities. This isn't just an issue that Sheffield's facing, you know, it's an issue in Edinburgh with their expanded tram network as well. So, how we manage those tensions and make sure that everyone can use that road space is really, really important. So, thank you councillor Shaw for raising that particular issue. Let's move on quickly in a second to our discussion of the wider substantive item, but councillor Shaw.
So, sorry Chair, just my point about this committee supporting the carriage of cycles on trams, is that something that the rest of the committee members would support? It's something that you would support, Chair?
I think councillor Shaw, South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority, as Tom has made clear, is investigating that at the moment. And from the comments that have been made publicly by South Yorkshire's mayor, Oliver Copart, he's very keen to see an expansion where possible of bikes on trams. Perhaps that might well be outside of some of the busy core times in the morning. Understand that Manchester, or Greater Manchester, has been trialling it. He's keen to see that happen. I think the committee here is very keen to see that happen. I think there's also a tandem discussion about how do we make sure that people who have got dogs, for example, well-behaved dogs, can go on our tram network as well. So, I think it's all part of that wider discussion. I think colleagues here in this room are very much in support of that, and I certainly am, and I know that South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority are. Okay, so I know that councillor Sanga wished to make a point as part of a wider discussion here, and I think councillor Campbell-Pugh did as well. councillor Sanga.
Thank you Chair. This report clearly ties in with other parts of our transport vision. And I think it is important to reflect on pace, and I think that's where I'm coming from, that often people have a vision for the best of intentions, and that vision ends up taking a long time to unpick. So, the vision that was standard across British cities in the 50s and 60s, these sweeping boulevards and these lots of, lots of roads, you know, and what have you, suburbs linked by ever wider roads, might have seemed right in the 50s and 60s. Our North American colleagues have had 60 years of going down that route. We, luckily in this country, remain a European country, whatever our relationship with our close neighbours and our cities are historic cities, and a lot of them go back a thousand years and the grid patterns go back a long time. So, it's really important to unpick the damage that we chose to do to our cities in the 50s and 60s and make them more accessible for walking, wheeling and cycling. I absolutely get that this report sees that from a social justice perspective, and I understand that, I would also say, from an environmental and a health perspective, there are other lenses you should look at it as well. So, that would be my reflections, that the Netherlands' journey to active transport started in the 70s and they've been doing it for 40, 50 years. It's going to take a long time for this country, but we do, we can get examples from other places. I know I was in Copenhagen for a week in the summer, and the Danes are clearly making progress, but they're nothing like going at the pace or have been going for as long as the Netherlands. So, there's a lot more to commit to do, and I absolutely get that we need to be inclusive and bring people along with us. The other group that we need to talk about consistently, as well as the hard-to-reach group are the disabled. And it's this point about integration, there will be people who, with the best will in the world, are not going to be able to walk long distances or cycle long distances to and from buses and trams. So, we need to make sure that we understand where those, where the bus routes are and where the bus stops are and things. So, making sure that our buses and trams are accessible to all has to be part of this. And I do, I am concerned at the number of comments made to me about the changes to bus routes over the last five years, which are basically saying, many, some disabled people are saying that that's made the buses less accessible to them, because they're no longer going where they want to go. So, I think we need to add that to our reflections. What I would say in terms of cycle segregation is, one of my first interviews with the councillor in 1992 on BBC Sheffield was, I remember talking about cycle segregation routes and how in 10, 15 years' time, we could make real changes. And I reflect back 32 years later that the network is better than it was in 92, but it is nothing like enough. I also then remember, from the discussion that councillor Shaw said, in 98, I submitted a petition up to allow bikes on trams, and it didn't go anywhere, because at that time Stagecoach clearly had no intention of allowing bikes and trams. Glad that the conversation has moved on. I think my concern, as somebody who's been here a long time, when I see investments of 2045, I'm thinking, we have missed opportunities in the past. I don't think we should miss this opportunity where we have cross-party agreements, that the way forward is to encourage walking, wheeling and cycling, both within neighbourhoods and within the city centre. And that it will only work if we take a social justice perspective and disability perspective, as well as a need for pace and a need to make these changes. Try and take as many people with us as possible, but the city that keeps moving is a city that fundamentally has people choosing to walk, wheel or cycle as their primary way of engaging with their transport options for short distances. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanga, and also for taking us through your long engagement over many years. And also thank you on behalf of the committee for not becoming jaded. It's quite clear that you have been pushing many of these issues for decades, for decades. And it does show, doesn't it, the journey and how long it takes often to deliver on many of these huge system change issues, but also huge transport infrastructure projects, which this is more broadly. councillor Campbell-Pugh.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, I just wanted to, as an opening comment, really thoroughly welcome this report. And I think it's the kind of strategic overview that I've been arguing for several years is exactly the right point for us to be focusing our attention and energies as a committee in terms of taking a lead on making this kind of change across the city, that then can hopefully be picked up by other committees, looking at other policy areas and the lax, et cetera, real root and branch stuff. That's great. I wanted to come back to some of the points about the objectives that other colleagues have raised, because in the objectives on page 37 of the report pack, it does say about improving cycling and walking in areas of the city with the greatest propensity, which I think ties into, you know, there are some areas like, Andy's mentioned, in the South West, where, you know, people are kind of chomping at the bit. There are other areas where it might be more difficult. We've got objectives in there about looking at using these kind of changes to improve health outcomes and to reduce social exclusion. And I don't know, it might just be my assumptions, but I always kind of feel that there might be a correlation. there might be a correlation between, a kind of inverse correlation between areas where there's the highest propensity to walk and cycle and areas where there are the worst health, health outcomes and the, the greatest social exclusion. And certainly from my experience of kind of doing community development work and consultation in, in some of the most socially excluded areas of the city, there are the areas where people might be least, have the least propensity to walk and cycle. But also I think sometimes are the areas of the city where poverty is higher and car ownership per head is, is lower. So I think it's important as we go through implementing this plan, that we don't see those sets of objectives as being either or, and that we actually look at ways that we can both kind of take the low hanging fruit and enable the people that are the keenest to be able to get on and, and make that modal shift, but also looking at the ways that we enable and support and encourage and remove the barriers in those areas where things are more difficult and it's a, it's a much more challenging task, but where the impact around health and social exclusion could be greater. So we need to be doing both.
Thank you councillor Campbell-Pugh for, for drawing out some of those, those tensions and offering a, a, a solution, which I know the report is to seek to address. Do I have any other colleagues who wish to make a contribution? Councillor Horner.
Just along the lines of my colleagues have also been saying, just about the length of time that all of this is going to take. And it is really important, because we talk a lot about net zero, it is really important as well as addressing the issues of social exclusion, of finding ways to get people out of their cars. And I, as you know, and I, I never waste the opportunity to say so, and I will continue to bang on forever and a day about the A57 into the city, the heavy levels of traffic. We've got to find ways of getting people out of their cars. We've got to find more park and ride facilities. We've got to encourage people to, to use public transport, and if that means, you know, getting, getting cycles onto, onto the trams may well enable people to get to work without using their car, because we all know what the problem is. The simplicity about a car is it takes you from point A to point B. And the easier we make it for people to make a relatively seamless journey, the, the better they will, it will be at getting people out of their cars. And I will just say, stray too far in a, in a period of, you know, I am disappointed that the bus fare cap has been, has been lifted. I, I don't think that helps, but there we are. So we just need to have as much as possible investment as quickly as possible in, in the various forms of public transport and, and walking and cycling schemes. We have to tackle that. We have to make it possible for people to, to get from A to B and feel safe, because that's the other issue. And certainly in terms of tram, I think most people feel safe on the tram when they're on the tram, because there's a conductor and things like that. And that's really important. So I say I welcome the report, but as, as my colleagues have said, I do think we need to go further and faster.
Thank you councillor Horner. Do I see any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? I think it's been really enlightening councillor Sanga reflected on his years of service in the council, but I would imagine that when councillor Sanga first kind of joined this council, that there wasn't necessarily a, a political consensus on these sorts of issues. And I'm really pleased to see that in, in this committee, I think there is a political consensus about the importance of enabling greater choice for people about walking, wheeling and cycling. So it's been really, really heartening to, to, to hear the contributions from colleagues in the Greens, the Liberal Democrats and, and Labour today on this. And thank you very much to Kate, to Greg and to Tom for presenting it. So that therefore moves us on to the recommendations of this particular item, which are on page 34 of your report pack. Based upon the discussion that we've had, I think we will probably all be in agreement. But can I ask colleagues whether they are agreed? If, if they are, it'd be good to, to see some nodding. If any member wishes to dissent, please do raise your hand. Do I see that colleagues are, are happy for us to approve this, the development of the Sheffield Walking Wheeling and Cycling Investment Plan? I do see that and there's no dissent, so that item is therefore being carried. Thank you so much for bringing that item, for bringing it today, but also for the really good quality engagement with seldom heard voices in order to spring this forward today. That therefore takes us on to the next item on our agenda, and that is item nine, which is the Transforming Cities Fund, and it's the Southwest Bus Corridors item. It's on page 133 of your agenda pack. I think that Andrew is perhaps on annual leave at present, and I think Tom Finnegan-Smith is going to run us through it. Some longer standing members of the committee will have followed the journey and the development of this scheme for a number of years, and this is kind of the, the latest update, I think, Tom.
It is, Chair, thank you. As you say, committee previously endorsed a, a range of bus priority measures on London Road, Ecclesall Road, Abbeydale Road corridors as part of the connecting Sheffield Southwest corridors, bus, bus, bus corridor scheme. Today's report sets out the, the response to the statutory consultation that has been undertaken recently on the scheme, and this is the, potentially the final decision on this scheme before it's, it's fully implemented. The project proposals, as was considered previously, intend to provide the opportunity for faster, more reliable and more consistent bus journey times along these corridors, to make them more attractive and ultimately more viable. And the, the, the measures that we've proposed require a range of TROs, that's Traffic Regulation Orders, to introduce localised amendments to waiting and loading restrictions and some small amendments to sections of bus lanes. A description of all the interventions that have been promoted within the project are included in appendix A, and the TRO plans that show these in place are, are attached at appendix B. The formal statutory consultation resulted in 14 people providing us with feedback, including concerns or objections to various parts of the scheme proposals. A full copy of the feedback received is attached to appendix C, but the main concerns along with officers' responses to those are set out at paragraph 4.2.6 within the report. Having considered all of the objections and, and concerns raised and our responses to those, officers aren't proposing to make any changes to the scheme that was advertised. So we recommend that committee consider the objections received, but in doing so, authorise the making of the TRO as set out in the plans at appendix B. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom, for very succinctly going over that particular item on the Southwest Bus Corridor. I'm mindful that colleagues will have had many opportunities as part of knowledge briefings to go over some of the detail of this item, and the report obviously also goes through this in lots of detail. But do I have any questions from colleagues in the room? I don't see any questions, there have of course been many questions that were raised in the development of this particular item, which we see has been really important and strategic in order to speed up bus travel across the city. Particularly important as we move towards that bus franchising consultation that's currently in process, in order to speed up our buses and to increase patronage, then we do need to make sure that our infrastructure across the city supports it. Are there any colleagues who wish to make another contribution that perhaps isn't a question? Councillor Sanga.
Yes, Chair, I welcome this report. I mean, it's clearly, we've been back and forth in terms of some of the, some of the changes. I think, you know, what we've got here represents a stable position in terms of change, making these changes which have broad support, so pleased to support that. The challenge remains in terms of both Abbeydale Road and Ecclesall Road is the enforcement of parking restrictions. And whenever we've gone down, gone on, on walks to, to look at it, that seems to me the key thing that this report will not solve on its own. So this is, this is about, you know, understanding the priority of, of those two routes that are absolutely key for lots of bus routes and whatever the future of terms of bus franchising and bus pricing, we need to make sure that buses are, that buses on these two corridors are able to get past. And that must mean that where, 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 where there is no parking, where there's a bus lane in enforcement during those hours of the bus lane, that we find a way of enforcing that. I think that's, to me, is, is, is the key thing we can do, do today. I mean, obviously we're all, we're all waiting, waiting to understand where we go with bus franchising and as I say, and, and bus pricing's got to be part of that. But the buses, if the buses can't get through because of parked cars, then these, these changes, welcome as they are, will not solve all of our problems. So I would hope to see, as we've heard earlier, in terms of joint party working, in terms of what more can be done about, about parking enforcement, because for, for me, these bus corridors are only going to work if the bus lanes are clear. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanga. I, I do see that Tom wants to come back on that, but do you mind if I just very quickly go to councillor Merzouga?
Thank you. It's just to ask, I understand the enforcement won't be by camera, but I was wondering if there'd be opportunity to use the newly fixed camera car to enforce on this stretch?
Thank you councillor Merzouga. Tom, I'm mindful that this is not the part of the meeting where we, we would necessarily go back to officers, but I think that's absolutely fine. Tom, if you can help us with some of those specific questions?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just, just to clarify really, councillor Sanga, the, the main reason it's not covered in detail on, on this report is, it's, it's that specific TRO, but the, the report you previously endorsed did cover some of the enforcement issues. So it is our intention to use camera enforcement along both the, the London Road, Abbeydale Road and Ecclesall Road corridors on those sections of bus lane that are currently in place. There are some minor amendments obviously as a result of this report, should it be approved today? But the, the bus lanes will be enforced by camera, and we are doing some supportive work at the moment to continue to move towards mobilising that in the near future. What, what we cannot under legislation enforced by camera are sections of double yellow line or, or, or loading restrictions outside of the extents of the bus lanes. That clearly is in our, our intention to focus some of our energies within that, and we are working closely with colleagues in Parking Services to align the, the launch of the, the camera enforcement as well as broader enforcement where we know there are hotspots along these corridors. Fully agree with the, the kind of needs to enforce any abuse of these bus lanes. Whatever schemes we put in, they are only as effective as, as some of the, the enforcement of them. And, and it is, it's clear that we've had abuse on both of these corridors previously that we need to try and address effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Do I see any other colleague who wishes to raise any particular point about this particular report? I don't. Of course, as I said before, that doesn't mean to say that we haven't had many discussions about this over the years and as we've been formulating this particular update as well. So on page 133 of the agenda pack is where we will find the report, but on page 135, there are a, a number of recommendations that are asking for the committee's approval. Are we all agreed? If any member wishes to dissent, then please do raise your hand. Can I see colleagues who are in agreement nodding? Superb, absolutely. Does any, any member wish to dissent? I don't see any, any member dissent, dissenting, so therefore that item has been carried. Tom, thank you very much for taking us through that really important strategic piece of work that we have prioritised as a city. Therefore, that takes us to item number 10, which again is another exciting piece of work about the Furness Hill and Neeps End catalyst site. It's on page 209 of our agenda pack, and an appendix A is published separately due to the size of the document, but is available and has some stunning pictures as part of it, and that's been published on the council's website. And David Mason and Alan Teasman are going to run us through this particular item. Over to you, Alan and David, and David in particular, thank you for all your hard work on this. I know that you've, you've briefed the committee at length prior to this meeting as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, everybody. So I'm David Mason, Principal Development Officer in the City Regeneration Team. We've got, I've got a presentation today just to take you through some of the, update you on progress with the delivery of the catalyst sites and in particular the development framework, which has been developed in partnership with Homes England. So just some quick background, the Furness Hill and Neeps End, two of five priority locations for city centre housing identified within the local plan, which has of course been submitted, the others being Wicklow Riverside, Morfet and Castle Gate. And then Furness Hill and Neeps End also contain two of the three catalyst sites, the other being Morfet that the local plan identifies to accelerate regeneration. For each of those priority locations, we have priority neighbourhood frameworks in place, concept master plans, which are supporting documents to the, to the local plan, outlining key design principles. Off the back of that, with our partners at Homes England as part of the Sheffield Together partnership, we've put together a business case for funding and managed to secure £67 million to deliver approximately 1,300 homes across these sites to acquire, remediate those sites and also to deliver public rail. We've since developed the outline principles of the, of those frameworks into what we call the development framework, which is essentially a procurement tool for Homes England to go out, procure development partners to deliver the vision for these areas. It's a hefty document, as if any of you have read it, you'll have seen, so I'll take you through it and summarise it as best I can. So if we start off just on the location, this puts, this slide puts the areas in the context of the city centre strategic vision and neighbourhood approach within that. Neeps End, I think most people will be familiar with, it's a neighbourhood on its own, just worth pointing out Furness Hill, actually part of the St Vincent's neighbourhood, takes its name from a street within the Furness Hill Conservation Area and is the, the name that's been given to the area between Scotland Street and the Ring Road, basically bridging the gap between St Vincent's and Kelham Island. Focusing more on Furness Hill, hopefully this plan is clear. The, the wider area there is the priority location. There is a, a smaller dotted line within that which represents the catalyst site, and then the bold red line, seven, eight, nine, 10, is the area that's the red line for the development framework. So just to be clear, it doesn't cover the whole of the catalyst site, we've, we've broken it down to a deliverable, deliverable site to start with, which the document addresses. At Neeps End, slightly different in the sense that it covers the whole of the catalyst site there, the development framework, that is. Just worth noting, another couple of major sites within the priority location, Cannon Brewery there, number one, which has a significant combined authority investment going in to deliver that and also the former Abbey Stainers there, number two. So, so the catalyst site in Neeps End, one of three major parcels to be, to be brought forward. On to the vision for the sites laid out there for you. The, the, the key word I would want to focus on there is distinct, so it makes sense from a pragmatic point of view, it has made sense to bring these Furness Hill and Neeps End together for master planning purposes, but they are distinct neighbourhoods, or they will be distinct neighbourhoods. They're part of different character areas within the local plan, Furness Hill within the inner ring road, obviously hillside topography, Neeps End outside the inner ring road and, and. outside the inner ring road and, and Riverside Valley neighbourhoods. So important to, to stress the independence of the areas, but also in the context of the development framework, common principles. So transformational design, essentially recognising that in order to bring forward neighbourhoods that can stand, um, equivalent to other neighbourhoods through the city in the suburbs, we need to lift the quality of the design. Connected communities, so embedding these communities, new communities within the emerging city centre, but also amenities that allow those communities to connect to each other. Restoring landscape and habitats, clearly the original development of these areas for industry was done without regard to, to, to nature or habitats and has had some, um, some negative effects over the years. It's a real opportunity to address that balance now, especially with the proximity to the river in Neeps End, uh, some opportunity for really significant biodiversity gain. Active environments, the default position within these neighbourhoods is going to, is not going to be car ownership. And so with that in mind, it's absolutely essential that we enable active travel throughout. And that is what lies at the heart of, of the framework. And then finally, celebrating heritage, the common thread for these two areas is, um, is the fact that both overlap with conservation areas, enormous amounts of industrial heritage, which we want to protect for its heritage value, but also importantly for its place-making value and the opportunity to root these new neighbourhoods in their historical context. So if you've read through the, the appendix and the developer framework, you'll see that it is very much a heritage-led approach. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of content in there, a lot of review. Three of the major assets there just highlighted Cornish Works in Neeps End and then, uh, the, the Furnace and Don Cuthbert Works, which will be right at the heart of the Furnace Hill development with a, a new public square envisaged. Next slide just shows, quite useful I think to, to show the extent of, of the heritage assets within the area. Um, we've, a lot of work has been done charting the development of the area through the centuries, looking at how the different types of works came forward and changed over time and that's informed the residential typologies that have been, um, that have been produced. So I think this kind of gets to, to the heart of, um, the challenge for the development framework really, which is that we need quality neighbourhoods that will attract long-term residents and families and people who are, you know, going beyond the idea that you would just have a flat in the city centre for a few years and then settle down in the suburbs. And so we need that quality, but we need to do it at a density that's appropriate for a city centre that takes advantage of that opportunity to deliver sustainable neighbourhoods with low car use, with high numbers of residents to support thriving local businesses. And of course importantly to, um, deliver those numbers that we've identified, we need new houses within the local plan. And so we can't do that by just transplanting what works in the suburbs. We have to look, um, at new models, we have to accept that there will be flats and maisonettes, long-term residence in flats and maisonettes and not just townhouses. And so one of the challenges for the, um, for this piece of work has been, uh, looking at how we deliver that quality within, um, new models. So this one, for example, uh, a gallery access courtyard model where you have dual aspects in all the units, um, so cross ventilation, everybody's got their own front door, you've got secure communal external space, um, supervised space for, for families, um, for kids to play and so on. So, um, that's just one of a number of typologies that have been worked up. Maisonettes, again likely to play a role, you've seen some of this in Little Kelham already. We'll see, we'll certainly see townhouses, more traditional, um, family housing, but that will be part of a mix. And then it's important to note, we've got here the boundary blocks. The, uh, there's a lot of focus on the interior of these neighbourhoods, but we have to accept that a lot of the, the properties that we're going to be building are going to be facing out onto main roads, the inner ring road, Rutland Road and so on. So, uh, a lot of work has gone on looking at the design of those boundary blocks, making sure that they can provide the, 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 the quality of accommodation that's required to, to attract people, again looking at dual aspects wherever possible. These, these actually feature some, um, some units on the ground floor that, uh, three-bed, effectively a bungalow on, on the, on the ground floor if you like, so, um, which underlines the, the importance of looking at accessible housing as well in these neighbourhoods close to the tram, a real opportunity to take advantage of the relative accessibility and provide housing that meets those needs. This is, um, an image that's not in the development framework actually, it's, the, the framework isn't that prescriptive. What this is, is a, from a capacity study that was done to inform the business case, testing the numbers that we were, uh, Homes England were putting into that case to make sure they were deliverable. So it just gives you, um, a sense of the, the nature of development expected, it's about eight hundred homes on that plan you see in front of you, an opportunity for significant height on the Shelsmore Roundabout affecting the previous consent there. Um, and you can hopefully make out the new public space in the middle, um, making, making use of the, uh, the heritage assets. So that, that's another view of it from the junction of Matthew Street and Doncaster Street, showing the cementation furnace there at the heart of a, a new public square, a, a domestic scale round that that will rise, um, in height as you move to the, to the exterior of the, of the site. Then at Neeps End, similar thing, uh, taken from the capacity study, just some, some points to note there, the opening up of the river, really important. The, the, you know, the industrial development of the area always turned its back on the river, there's an opportunity now to open that up for benefit not just of residents, but of, of others passing through. There is an aspiration shown there for a new pedestrian and cycle bridge. It's just worth noting that that is outside of the sixty-seven million pounds that's been secured. But it's, it's in there because the Rutland Road Bridge, the listed structure is, is not capable of, um, accommodating a segregated cycleway, it's not wide enough. This, again, just another CGI image indicating what, um, how things could be opening up the river and, and making it much more, uh, making the most of that fantastic asset that we have down there. Moving on to sort of, uh, delivery issues, this is worth bringing to your attention. So at Finance and Performance Committee earlier this month, the decision was taken to dispose of this council land, the area outlined in red excluding the, uh, the, the area in blue there, um, decision taken to move forward with disposing that to Homes England. And the, um, the benefits of that will be that together with the landholding that they've already secured within the Neeps End site, when they go out to market, they will have, or shortly have in their ownership, a, a key site within both, yeah, within both neighbourhoods, which will help create a more credible proposition for the market. So just moving on to the projected housing mix, the, the obvious thing to draw your attention to there is the amount of family housing, three-bed housing, which is obviously an uptick from what you would have normally seen in the city centre in previous years. And crucially, the affordable housing, um, level there. So, um, once the submitted local plan is adopted, there will be a ten percent, um, planning policy, planning requirement for affordable housing in these areas, but decision's been taken that that will go up to twenty percent. That's in the Homes England business case, that would be funded through additional Homes England grant over and above the sixty-seven million pounds that's been secured. And as you'll note there, a hundred percent nationally described, space standards compliance as well. The, um, the, the timetable for developer partner procurement, this is broadly, um, proceeding to plan for, with Homes England. And they told me this morning that, that we're publishing the public contract notice, we're commencing fourth of November, so not quite end of October, but near enough. And then the, the intention would be to move the contract toward, um, next spring. And the expectation is that there will be development partner, a development partner for Neeps End and another for Furnace Hill. And then finally on the timescales, um, these are indicative, but this is the latest Homes England programme, you'll notice some overlap there between a number of the activities and that reflects the fact that Homes England are in the process of, um, discussing acquisition with various private landowners. Obviously, depending on how quickly discussions move on different sites, um, they'll be able to, to, to move things forward, um, more quickly or not, as the case may be. But as things stand, we will, um, be expecting to see some, um, some activity, uh, on site and next year with, um, some, uh, some of the early enabling works. So that's a quick whizz through of the framework and the, um, where we stand with delivery. So moving back down to any questions?
Thank you, David, for running us through, um, that very extensive and detailed report. Um, I can see, I think councillor Gilligan Kubo first raised a hand.
Thank you very much. I think it, it's, uh, an exciting development. There's obviously been a lot of thought given to making it a nice place to live, which I really welcome. And there's also, when I've read the report, there's a lot of thought given to the biodiversity net gain and all those kind of issues. So, um, I welcome that and the heritage aspect, of course, we have to preserve. Uh, but one thing that, um, isn't mentioned, and when we've talked about it previously, we have to achieve net zero. It isn't actually talking about what the houses will be, how well will they be insulated? Will they be having solar panels? How will they be in meeting our net zero targets as well as fitting in with the heritage and the design aspects? And can we influence that? Because I think it's really important we build houses fit for the future and not ones that we're going to have to retrofit in ten years' time.
I think, um, the, the sort of, the, the way that that is being led, that there's a number of things within this, um, because where we are with the Sheffield Plan, having been submitted, that's pushing us forward on a number of fronts. So for example, with, uh, car parking, then to take, to take one example, and, and this framework responds to, um, to what the local plan is saying on that and doesn't perhaps go into sort of repeat the detail from it. And so I think the, the document that is going to drive, um, things from net zero perspective is, is more likely to be the local plan. I think on top of that, um, the, the benefit of having the relationship that we've got within Sheffield Together Partnership is that we've got Homes England as our, as our partner. So rather than, um, simply working with the private market, we have Homes England, um, sort of signed up to the, the, the same kind of agenda as we are when it comes to net zero and really pushing that forward through their procurement processes. So I think as we see, as we see more of that going public and the negotiations down the line with the developer partners, I think you will start to see more flesh on the bones and more detail about how those objectives will be met.
Thank you, um, David. Councillor Muzro.
Thank you. It's a really interesting report. Um, I represent this area as Ward councillor, so I was very interested to read, um, about the plans for long-term living and, um, better spaces and better streets for people. I do have a few questions. Just reading through my notes, um, the plans for the Riverside Park in the Bacon Island area on page fifty-three, fifty-four, it's really good that, um, it's starting to address the lack of open space and public space in this area. It's something that's really lacking. I'm wondering if you could tell us a bit more about that and the timescales for getting these in. Car parking, can I confirm that these will be, um, mostly car-free developments? I'm guessing they're not all car-free developments because there's mention further on, on with the townhouses section as having on-street parking, which seems a bit of a contradiction if they're also promoting sustainable travel. It also seems like a missed opportunity to rethink street space, not just as a space for car parking, but a place for, um, community activity, um, and greenery. Public art is mentioned on page eighty-six. Um, it's really important that this plays a role in the quality of the street environment and I'm wondering what plans there are for public art. I'm interested in the, oh, I've also already mentioned the, um, the Riverside walkway, so it'd be good to hear more about that. It's really good that the report talks about the need for infrastructure and services, um, because there's already a desperate need in the area for doctors, schools, play spaces, shops and, um, cultural community sports, which is a home for kinka and kayak. So I'm wondering, um, what the plans are for that. And the Furnace Hill and Neeps End Homes England report mentions five thousand square metres of new open space. I'm wondering what the plans are for that. And I think that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, on Bacon Island, that forms part of, um, the Abbey Stain, the former Abbey Stainers site. Our understanding there is that there is, uh, a developer with an option on that site. If that site, well, as and when that site comes forward, the develop, the, um, delivery of Bacon Island Park would be part of, of that planning application. So that, um, that's where that is. On the car-free point, it will, the, the, I referred to the local plan earlier, um, the developments will, mostly developments will be, most of the ski, most, most of the homes within these developments will not have, um, car parking. Some will, so within the local plan in the city centre, I think it's, uh, one space for a three-bed and above, and, uh, I think, uh, ten percent for schemes of one to two beds. So off the top of my head, I seem to recall when we were looking at capacity testing, there were about, um, in Neeps End for example, about forty car parking spaces within that entire development. So the default would be, um, not, uh, not to have a car, but there will be some, um, house types within, within there that would. The, the, the detail of how those are accommodated in terms of within the street scene or for example tucked away like at, uh, Little Kelham, Undercroft Parking, that's the sort of thing that would be developed, uh, worked up in detail with the development partner once, once procured. Similarly on public art, um, the, and the, and the public open space, those are, those are matters that once we have a developer partner on board, we'll be getting into the detail, um, of, of exactly what that's going to look like and where it's going to be. The wider question of amenities for these areas, and I think it's a, it's, it's a very much a live issue. The, the, the thing I would say about it is we're not planning a new town, so we, we don't have the ability to say, or no, an urban extension where we can say, right, this is how many houses, these are the sites, we're going to have a surgery here, a school here, hospital here, whatever it is. And we are dealing with a sort of more organic approach to development, if you like, where there's existing infrastructure. In some cases, the, um, the additional homes being built here and residents are actually going to support existing struc, uh, infrastructure. In other cases, it will create more pressures and, and gaps that will need to be addressed. These particular parcels for, for most services are not going to be, um, or in a lot of cases not going to be big enough to justify the provision of a new surgery to serve it. So what we have to do, I think, is take a, a city centre-wide approach, whether it's education provision, health, um, uh, open space and, and understand the, 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 the need across the new neighbourhoods that we're bringing forward and the opportunities within each individual neighbourhood to satisfy some of those needs. So there could be, um, so within these, within the red line of these development framework sites, there could be needs for wider areas that might be met within it, but there might be other needs that will be met without it and, um, and it requires, um, intensive partnership working with all kinds of other agencies. But I think that the one thing we do need to make sure of, looking at the, there'll obviously be a lot of ground floor accommodation within these developments, is that we are ensuring that, um, we're kind of future-proofed in terms of being able to accommodate the various services that the area will generate demand for, even if at the outset, those services might not be in place from day one, if that makes sense.
Thank you, um, David. Um, I was not entirely clear whether it was perhaps councillor Riddler or councillor Campbell Pugh wished to speak next. Was it councillor Riddler?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about the heritage. As the council's heritage champion, of course, I'm delighted that the, the restoration and the celebration of heritage assets is at the, uh, centre of the developments that we've heard about this morning and it's, this is... And this is going to be achieved by integrating the heritage buildings and structures into new developments. So Furnace Hill, for example, central to this, as we've heard, is the mid-19th century cemeterium furnace, which is a listed structure and a scheduled monument due to its importance in Sheffield's industrial heritage and the intention to create the public realm with that at its core. So of course, it's crucial that we see sensitive renovation and restoration of assets like this. And members may or may not be aware that since the 13th of September, the council have taken out a section 215 order in force against the owners, directing them to remove the vegetation and fly posting and graffiti on the building and within the boundary of the monument. And I know we're about halfway through that compliance period. And, you know, so I congratulate officers on their vigilance and commitment to protecting the infrastructure of our heritage. And I know that they'll be monitoring the situation. So, I mean, I'm fully aware that the management of and protection of historic buildings is a challenge, especially when these are privately owned. So my question is, what strategies have we got in place for dealing with similar issues which may arise in future with privately owned heritage assets, which are of course crucial to the delivery of these schemes? Thank you, Chair.
I think the simple answer within the red line of the development framework is to buy them and to bring them into Homes England's ownership initially. And then obviously then to work through the developer partner to bring them forward. Clearly, there will be other important heritage assets, perhaps just beyond the boundary, where we might have to take a different approach depending on funding that's available. I don't know, Alan, if you want to add anything to that, because you have more involvement with other sites.
I think the key thing in terms of this approach is to bring them back into use where we can, which gives them some sort of like, you know, custody of building and somebody looking after it actively, is one thing. With things like the furnace itself within Furnace Hill, creating the public realm around that and giving it some great kind of public ownership and respect and ongoing looking after it will be part of what we need to sort out in terms of the development written forward, whether it's that some sort of, like, there'll be a service charge which helps the upkeep of that public realm, is one thing like that. Beyond that, I think we're then relying on what we can do statutorily, what we can do budget-wise. But the development of the heritage strategy, I think, is key to that in terms of starting to identify the list of things that we need to keep a closer eye on.
Thank you, Alan. Do you see any other colleagues wishing to ask a question of officers? I don't. I'll therefore ask one additional one, if that's okay. We're all really big advocates, I think, of this plan more broadly. But for those people who might be watching from home, could I ask you to help flesh out why this plan? And I know that this plan today that we are considering about Neepsend and Furnace Hill sits along two other catalyst sites. Why is it so significant for the future of the city centre from an economic perspective? And I guess, speaking plainly, what does a larger resident population in the central part of the city centre of Sheffield, what does it mean for a thriving economy more broadly in Sheffield?
I'll attempt to answer that, if that's okay. So, I mean, housing is absolutely critical to meeting the needs of our residents and our growing population. You know, people having a safe, warm, secure home to live in and also making sure that our homes are available for people to do that is absolutely essential to what we're doing. And in many ways, what we need to regard housing as is housing is part of the infrastructure that we need to provide for growth. So in terms of how it plays a role within the economy, you know, housing is absolutely critical in terms of making sure that we retain skilled workers, that we provide homes for people who can work in the city and grow our economy and grow our kind of population. The approach that we've taken with focusing on the city centre is about revitalising the city centre and making more of that as a sustainable location and bringing more and more people into play, into live and work and play in the city centre, support other economic activity and allows us to do that in the most sustainable location we've got in the city.
Thank you, Alan, for that really succinct answer to my question. Are there any colleagues who wish to make a wider point about this particular item that doesn't necessarily need an officer's response? I don't see any indications from colleagues on that. And thank you therefore, David and Alan, for bringing this item, as well as the really high-quality imagery that you've also provided, which really kind of helps bring to life for us, but also for citizens across the city, the ambition of the plan. And I think it really is a step change in our approach for how we deliver housing and particularly affordable housing there. You spotlighted about 20% affordable housing within our plan. But a real step change in our approach, and that's only been brought about through that partnership with Homes England and other partners in order to be able to deliver for economic growth in the city, but also for people who we want to retain in this city and provide good quality housing to. The report is contained, that we've been looking on, on page 209. But the recommendations of the report are also as part of that. I don't necessarily have the page reference to give to you. It's on the next page, on page 210. So can I ask members whether they are happy to approve the recommendation on page 210 of this particular report? If any member wishes to dissent, please do raise your hand. I'm seeing the colleagues are nodding. They're fairly content, very content with passing that. So that item has therefore been carried. Thank you very much, David and Alan, for bringing it today. We very much appreciate it. We do have one additional item to consider. It's an important one about the land climate route map, and that's on page 225. However, I am just mindful that the colleagues have said that they do need a very short comfort break in our proceedings today. So if it's okay with the committee, I think we'll just take perhaps a five-minute comfort break. That would then allow us about half an hour to be able to discuss the next particular item. We may have to extend the guillotine by a short amount of time if we're allowed to do so. So we'll just pause our proceedings for five minutes. We just paused our proceedings so that people could have a very, very quick comfort break in the room today. So we pick up on item 11 on our agenda, which is on page 225 of the agenda pack. And it is the land climate route map, which is part of a suite of route maps that the council is developing. This one has been formulated over the past few months, working with partners. And Victoria and Mark are going to run us through it as well. Thank you also, Victoria and Mark, for all the hard work that you put into deliver this and bring it to this stage.
Thank you, Chair. Victoria Pennman, Sustainability Programme Officer, Sustainability and Climate Change Team.
Thank you. I'm Mark Whitworth. I'm Service Manager for the Sustainability and Climate Change Team. Thank you.
Thank you again. So as you've alluded, this is one of the items, one of the route maps which we committed to in the 10-point plan. There are seven route maps in total, and this route map is the fourth route map to be delivered. So it's probably helpful to start out by noting that the current net total emissions from our land and agriculture in the city equate to around 1.3% of the city's total emissions. So that's really a very small percentage. However, our land is still very important for us. We need to do everything that we can if we're going to reach net zero. And for land-focused partners and landowners, the actions in this route map are really the kind of key area where they can focus and deliver action. And so this route map will set the framework for action for them. Our land is also really important in supporting the city to become resilient to climate change. And a lot of what we do to support the city to become resilient will also help to reduce emissions and vice versa, if we get that right. So the Pathways to Decarbonisation reports outline the interventions needed to reach net zero by 2030. The main recommendations there focus on the planting of millions of trees and restoring peatland on a landscape scale. This route map also covers agriculture, which isn't covered in detail in the Pathways to Decarbonisation report because that's an area where the council has very limited influence. But we do cover that in this route map as well. So using the recommendations of the Pathways to Zero reports and a range of other evidence, including the results of consultations with a range of stakeholders and particularly focused on the recommendations of the UK Committee on Climate Change, this route map is a simple framework document with two key objectives, which are that the city's land is planned and managed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and the city's land supports people and nature to be resilient to the changing climate. There are six priority areas within this, which are the more and better managed trees and hedgerows, restored peatlands, peatlands are a really key area, sustainable agriculture practices. And then onto the second objective, nature-based and engineered solutions will increase our resilience to climate change in the city. Nature recovery supports climate change and that sustainable agriculture and land and water practices will increase our resilience. So the route map includes priorities around, but it does not comprehensively address the nature emergency. The local nature recovery strategy is currently being developed by the South Yorkshire Mire combined authority. And this will be where the majority of nature recovery actions will sit. So within the document appended, you'll see that there's a list of actions. There's three tables of actions which are fairly high-level priorities, rather than drilling down into specific actions needed. So there's two tables with actions for the two objectives and then the final one, considering the wider conditions needed for success. And so, as I mentioned, these are fairly high-level and set the strategic framework. So the route map doesn't go into detail on action that is already happening in the city, but there is a lot of great work happening in the city around this. So the council's doing quite a lot, particularly through the flood and water management team and countryside service. There's also a huge amount of work that's been taking place by a wide range of other partners. And so that's particularly kind of relevant to this because this route map isn't largely covering the council's land. That council's land is covered in our council route map and the rural strategy. So this route map is primarily focused on land owned by other partners and other organisations in the city. So there's a huge amount happening locally. However, we need to be really clear that while we set the framework for action in this route map, it's very difficult for us as a city, even working together, to achieve everything that is needed for us to be able to make the change that we need to make. So a lot of the action that needs to happen for progress in this area needs to come from government. And you can see in the table on the left-hand side of the screen, which is a chart from the Committee on Climate Change, that the areas in the orange boxes, which are the areas related to land and to agriculture, are some of the areas where there has been least activity, least progress so far. So there's still a lot of action that is needed at that level. So changing policy, financial subsidy regimes are particularly important for landowners. This is a major challenge for this area of work. Finally, I just wanted to highlight some of the key actions which have been identified for the council to lead on. This isn't a particular area of focus for the Sustainability and Climate Change Team. We will be looking at the financing side of things. But there are partners or colleagues across the council, particularly in flood and water management, who are doing a large amount of work, both in relation to our land, but also working with partners at a catchment scale level. And parks and countryside and planning also kind of working in this area. So in conclusion, I'd like to ask that the committee approve this route map, and I'm very happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Victoria. I can see councillor Gillian Kubo.
Thank you, Chair. Just have a query about that last slide. I didn't have any questions until I saw that. Aim to reduce land use change from green to grey. What does that mean, please?
That's more a planning question, really. So it's about trying to reduce the amount of planning on green belt land, really. So looking at building on brown belt where possible.
Thank you, Victoria. Councillor Horner.
Yeah, just quickly following up on that last point. Given the new government's interest in particularly in greater development, making things easier, how do you think this fits? Do you think there's going to be any change in guidance? Because it seems to me that many of people are concerned that more green areas are going to be put into development.
I think it's still early days. I think a bit early to tell for us since we're not hugely close to the planning side of things. But I don't know whether you have any additional thoughts?
I think the only other thing to add is obviously the route maps are intended to be dynamic documents so that they can be reviewed rather than be sort of a piece of, a document that's here for sort of the next 10 years. So I think the intention is to be able to be flexible and to take into account changes that are coming in, as you say, through new government policy, so that we can adapt and make sure that our plans fit the circumstances and also that we can influence those as they start to be developed.
Councillor Sanger.
Yes, Chair. I mean, 1.3% is quite a small amount. But going back to that previous slide in terms of what else government can do, how different would it be, you know, if this was a different area? So if we were, you know, if we were Dalbush Dales or whatever, an area with much bigger agricultural sector than Sheffield has, I mean, would it be a significantly larger percentage? I mean, I'm just looking at what the government committee was saying in terms of where they are in terms of action, in terms of food production and farming. 1.3% seems quite small for us, but from a national perspective and from a global perspective, sorting out food production and land required for food is a key part, I would have thought, for net zero targets.
I think that it's a relatively small proportion, if I go back to that slide there. So the way this graph is designed, the size of the lozenges that you can see are the size of emissions. So even at a national scale, it's still very, very small. However, yes, certainly for kind of more rural areas, it's very significantly more than is here here, particularly because they don't have the business emissions and, yeah, particularly the business emissions that we do here.
Thank you, Victoria and councillor Sanger. Do I see any other colleague who wishes to ask a question of officers? Would any colleague wish to make a wider point about this report? Councillor Sanger.
Very, very quick, Chair. Really, really welcome it. It's really important that we get these, we adopt the route maps. This is the fourth, so some more to go. You know, we're making, we're being clear in terms of what landowners need to do and working in partnership with them. Clearly, the big driver here is in terms of making more and increasing woodland space and getting better use of woodland and forestry. And clearly, the challenge in terms of moorland because, you know, good quality moorland peak should be, should be something which absorbs carbon dioxide rather than emits greenhouse gases. So there's a huge opportunity in terms of the upper moorland, both in Sheffield and the wider dark peak area. Lots of work is going on. I think this route map gives us clear, it gives us another instrument to make sure that change happens quickly enough. The other point in terms of land use is irrespective of what we do in terms of our net change, we are seeing climate change and we are seeing more frequent high rainfall events which lead to flooding. So we are going to have to get that mitigation in terms of flood risk. There is a limit to how high we can build the flood walls. So the higher we go, the more work we do, higher up in the catchment area, the better. I'm very much looking forward to seeing the report. I'm very much looking forward to seeing the reports coming in the next few months in terms of the work we're doing in terms of catchments of, of rivers, because mitigating flood risk for people in Sheffield and businesses in Sheffield, really important thing for the council to be doing. But overall, good piece of work, we're glad that we're able to agree, to agree this today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sanger. Do any, is there any other colleague who wishes to make a contribution? I don't think so, therefore, I think I would probably say, I'm particularly pleased to see, I think, on page two hundred and forty-two, which is page six of the route map, particular reference to working to ending the practice of, of moorland burning, which I, I think is, is, is to be welcomed, because we know that it is a really scourge on the air quality in the city, and many residents are, are quite rightly frustrated about it. We also know that on, on many occasions, it's a threat to the biodiversity on, on the moorlands themselves, so I'm really pleased to see that. I'm also pleased to see, and I guess it's a reflection of the fact that the city centre, that the city council is a, is a significant driver and, and leader when it comes to ensuring that the city speaks with one voice about the climate emergency. But I'm also pleased to see that actually, this isn't just the city council, actually I can see down here that there's many other organisations and landowners, custodians of land, like for example, the Peak District National Park Authority, Yorkshire Water, the Environment Agency, DEFRA, Natural England, the Woodland Trust, lots of different organisations here who will need to work together in order to be able to deliver on our objectives in this route map. And, and I'd like to applaud the collaborative approach across different partners in bringing this route map to us today for, for consideration, so thank you very much. So that therefore takes us, unless I do have any other contributions from, from colleagues to making a decision about the recommendations of this route map, which is item eleven on the agenda. The recommendations that are for approval or consideration for us today are on page two hundred and twenty-six. Can I ask committee whether we are all agreed, and if any member wishes to dissent, then as, as normally, if you could raise your hand. But if you could nod to me that you are in agreement, that would be very much appreciated, and I see no dissent, dissenting voices. So therefore, we have passed the land climate route map, which is item eleven on our agenda. And thank you very much to Mark and Victoria for the, the months of, of work. And of course, I think it's probably important to say for, for those watching externally, perhaps at home, that actually we do often have regular updates about the development of items like this. So whilst there hasn't been a huge amount of discussion in the, in the chamber today on this, we have asked a significant amount of questions about it and been briefed very thoroughly about it, so thank you very much for, for your work. So that therefore does take us to the end of our meeting today. Thank you very much to officers for presenting the reports that have been in development, and thank you very much to colleagues for the quality of, of discussions, it's very much appreciated. I look forward to seeing everyone at our next meeting.